Good evening. I welcome you to the meeting of the Deerfield Planning Board, and I will read our rather lengthy introduction that we all perhaps should know by heart by now. The meeting is being held in hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 Act, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, including an extension of the remote participation provision.
There's not a lot of hearing going on here. That's hard. Can you, do you want to, are these live?
Well, this is cool.
I can hear you perfectly well.
But the audience can't.
Audience can.
Is this any better audience? Can you hear us better with this?
No.
No, that's.
No, they're not on at all.
They don't do anything.
Right.
Oh geez.
So, recommendations?
Tell me out. I say everyone's screwed up.
Well, like in the big.
I don't know what else to do.
But that's not been a problem in the past, has it?
Yes, it has always been a problem.
Yeah.
It has always been.
Tight ceiling is a terrible sound.
Yeah. It was meant for, to absorb small children's screaming at once, playing indoors.
We have to talk louder.
Okay. So if I speak at this volume, and I remember to speak at this all the time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Although this part's very boring, because it's just about what the governor tells us we can and can't do, and you know, we only listen with one ear.
I'm going to report.
Now you've cut off all the sound.
Annalee, we can't hear you at all.
Can you hear better James now too?
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, so now we're trying to figure out how to unmute Mary so that she can address the minutes.
Hi there, I move that we.
It's Ann Marie.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, but we still don't hear you, Ann Marie.
All right. I move that we accept the minutes from August 23rd and August 28th.
Well, we need to be able to hear Ann Marie at some point. So Jen, if you could work on that. So we will move the minutes to either another part of the agenda or to this. Wait, we can't hear Ann Marie. Nope. Will we be able to hear anyone who is on? So. I think what we will do is maybe take a little bit of a break right now so that we can figure out these technical difficulties because on a night with public care.
She's trying to figure it out.
But then did I even hear the town hall? But it was getting Ann Marie's thing talking. And even though she unmuted herself, we can hear her. So that might be a speaker connection out here. Where's Ann Marie?
Yeah, I just put it up.
Carolyn, can you say something? Does this go down?
No, it needs to be a 10.
Did you see it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, they can hear us by now. All right.
Can you hear me?
Bob, can you unmute yourself?
I can hear now. I can hear now. Can you hear me? Can't hear me?
They can all hear.
The host has to unmute us.
Right now?
Testing. Can you hear me? Anything? Can any of the board hear us yet? Jen, can you hear anybody yet?
Bob, I can hear you, but I can't hear any of the board members.
Yeah, we can hear fine on Zoom, but no, no Town Hall.
No, I can't hear a thing.
No.
I just wondered if we should just go down there. I don't know.
We should just call a Zoom meeting so we can hear each other.
Uh, yeah. I don't understand what's going on.
This is not, this is not at all productive.
No, I don't have my phone, so I can't call Jen.
Well, I have my phone, but.
I just can't talk to Jen to tell her that they, we can't hear them.
I heard them say they were going to take a break to try to fix this.
I already, I already called Jen to tell her that we couldn't hear still.
Okay.
I didn't realize there was, we can go down there in person and sit there.
Yeah, it's a hybrid meeting.
Huh?
It's a hybrid meeting.
Right. I think I might just drive down. I would like to hear, I would like to hear.
Yep, there it goes.
Yeah.
We're starting to be able to hear you.
You can hear us?
Maybe if you turn up your audio on their computers.
Turn up your audio on your computers at home.
I'm all the way up there.
Jen, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
It doesn't sound like it's coming through the speaker system, you know, on the table.
Yeah, it's not coming through the speaker system, that's the problem.
And you tried star six? Or hang up and dial the number again?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID. You are in the meeting now. There are more than 40 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing the button. You are unmuted.
All right. Can you hear us now?
Dave Wolf, what's up? He's not there.
What's happening?
Trevor, can you speak?
Yes, we can hear you, but you sound like you're underwater. I just, I think before we had the mics right over the speakers, and that's how it worked very well. But I know you don't have the mics on right now, so.
They're on.
Should we move over to?
Can you hear us now?
Who's next? Would you hang over the speaker system? And that seemed to work pretty well.
I don't know.
Do I do a star six? Is it already set up?
We can hear you pretty good right now.
Can you hear me? Who do you hear? Who do you hear?
Are you, are you good? Are you in the building?
Um, I'm like hovering right over it.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Over here at this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wonder how that was fixed, other than magic. Thank you very much. All right, so.
No, we still need to speak loudly.
Okay, so, minutes, Rachel?
Me?
And Mary, and Mary, sorry, and Mary.
Put it in my hand.
I move that we accept the minutes from August 2nd.
August 2nd.
Uh, favor.
Denise Mason, yes.
Rich Klein, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes. Andrew Weasley, yes.
Ann Marie Fleury, yes.
Annalee Wolfco, yes. So the minutes from the 2nd are approved.
The 23rd?
The 23rd. The 2nd, the 2nd. All of us didn't unfortunately see the 23rd in time.
Okay.
So, all businesses, we're moving on now to our public hearings. Um, not to belabor the fact, but the way, the process that we will have for all of the public hearings. I will introduce the measure, we will have public comments, and then the originator of the measure, either being the Planning Board or the Select Board, will conclude the public comments prior to closing the public hearing and deliberations and voting by the Planning Board. Our guidelines for our public comments are that we are asking for people to speak one at a time, and one comment per person. I will recognize speakers, and I will try to alternate between people in person and people on Zoom. Again, respectful, non-repetitive, and brief. We are asking for a two-minute limit. I've asked Vice Prayer Chair Denise Mason to be our timekeeper. We certainly aren't having a hole in the floor for you to drop through if you're over your two minutes, but please.
I don't know.
I don't know, she might have it, or the hook. She will give approximate 15-second warning, and please try to be respectful of that because as was mentioned, we've got 40 people on Zoom and a good handful here, so we, we really want everyone to feel like they are heard. And also, the board will be listening. We are not responding to individual comments or to individual questions. When the comments are done, or seem to be repetitive, I'll be asking the board if they're ready to close the public hearing, at which point we would vote to close the public hearing. And when it is closed, and we have our deliberations, and we then would entertain a motion on the issue. With a reminder that the motions that we will be approving tonight mean that they will be going to the warrant and to town meeting. We're not approving the bylaws per se, so please tell your family, friends, anyone you can, to residents of Deerfield, obviously, to come to our, our town meeting October 4th, 7:00 PM, at Frontier Regional High School. Really important to have as many people as possible. And when, when we as a board vote on the, on the amendments, we will either vote to send them forward unchanged or changed, and different dominoes fall according to that. So with that said, I will open the planning, the public hearing for the table, for the dimensional requirements for municipal frontage. And bear with me as I read the, read the article. And people in attendance, you can hear okay now also? Thank you. Thank you.
Right. If you don't hear it on the first round, you can hear it on the second round.
This one's slightly different. So, the Deerfield Planning Board is holding a public hearing pursuant to general, general laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on September 13th, 2021, on a potential amendment to the Deerfield zoning bylaws, are the, Chapter 179, Article 2, entitled "Use and Dimensional Requirements," Section 2300, entitled "Dimensional Requirements," Subsection 2320, entitled "Cable of Dimensional Requirements," by reducing the minimum frontage requirement for town-owned lots used for municipal facilities in the CRVD and C1 districts. And we'll have a moment in a minute to elaborate a bit on that. Full text of the proposed articles are in the foyer here and also on the website. And as we know, the, this meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion with information on the Zoom link on our town website. So with that said, the public hearing is now open for the municipal frontage bylaw amendment. I will start with an instruction that really only became obvious today, so please bear with us with this, that we discovered that due to an error in the posting, the desired districts were not actually included in the text. The districts should be CVRD, C1, and Industrial, and the text omitted Industrial. And as an aside, Industrial is the district that includes the proposed park, which I know many people are quite interested in addressing as far as this bylaw is concerned. The posting has been corrected. The Planning Board already had scheduled another meeting on September 30th to address other issues that I'll talk about in a minute. We could, we've been informed that we could actually open the public hearing tonight and then immediately move to continue the public hearing and not have any public comments tonight. We've decided not to do that. The Planning Board is working very hard to encourage public engagement, and as we see by the number of people who are attending both in person and online, we're very pleased to have public engagement like this. So we will take comments tonight. I will again ask everyone to be very respectful of the two-minute limit, of trying not to be repetitive, certainly since we will be continuing this hearing for September 30th. There will be more opportunity for hopefully different comments then. Again, we apologize for this problem, but we are thankful to have your, your involvement. And it appears that there's a question, if this is a question rather than a comment, because I still would like to introduce the article a little bit more. Linda's iPad, Linda, is this a question or is this a comment?
Comment, and it can wait. Thank you.
Linda, so, as many of you remember, a similar article was presented in June at the annual town meeting, but at that point, the municipal frontage request was proposed to be town-wide. This article is for the 50-foot frontage reduction for municipal properties within what will now be the three districts, CVRD, C1, and Industrial districts. Among rationales that will be discussed, I think, tonight in the comments is the statement that it gives the town more flexibility to act quickly, to encourage economic growth, and it's fairly common in many other cities and towns, and it also is seen as safe access, not endangering the public in any way. So with that said, maybe we'll go back to Linda as the first Zoom comment, and then we'll have a comment from the audience here. So Linda?
It seems that there are already provisions in place for this process. If there is a piece of land that requires an appeal, they should go through that process. Town meeting strongly opposed this change, and we should respect that. And each and every piece of property for its specific use should go through the process of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It should not be a blanket change. We strongly voted that down at town meeting, and we should adhere to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Do we have someone in Town Hall? Lili? Uh, can you hear Lili? Yes or no? No, Tim says no.
I think you have to.
No, go closer to the mic, please.
Hi, Lili Glait, South Mill River Road. I just wanted to say that a couple of things, many of you know, I'm a strong advocate for senior housing, and our goal is to create senior housing in the heart of our community, the village. And this would be enormously helpful. But as a larger philosophical point, to speak to sort of what Linda was saying, I would say that this encourages infill development, so that much as we welcome our Snowberry Court neighbors, that was a beautiful field. And so this will work to develop more infill development, which is much more environmentally friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, Lili. Zoom, Zoom folks with a hand? Uh, Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First off, I really want to object to putting in the industrial zone at the last minute. Everybody knows that this was all about the industrial zone. I think that the stuff downtown was just an add-on. This was really about that property. And if you didn't put it on, if you didn't notice it, if it hasn't had two notices in the newspaper before this hearing, you shouldn't be dealing with this at this upcoming meeting. Do it at the regular town meeting or something like that, but we're not going to be following the proper procedures, uh, to bring in the industrial zone at this point. Um, uh, that being, that being said, um, the, the issue pertaining to the fact that people strongly voted this down in June, and, um, it's being brought up again, really have to consider, there's a, there's a provision of 40A, section 5, that says if you bring up, if you've lost a town meeting, it should wait two years before you bring something up again. And I know that the, it wasn't identical, but, but the point of it, the do or die point was the frontage, and the people voted it down. I mean, this planning board, they, they don't have to say no forever, but they should say no for this town meeting, or they should say no for two years. Uh, I, I think you should say no forever. Okay, I mean, because, think of it this way, I mean, the frontage is there to protect neighbors, and it doesn't really matter to the neighbors who are horribly affected by hundreds of cars and buses coming in between two residential homes, whether those cars and buses are going to, um, a facility that's run by the town or a factory that's run by a big corporation. It's still going to hurt the neighbors. Frontage is there for a purpose, and to just blanket right off, uh, makes no sense. It's unfair, inequitable to your citizens that live near public properties. It's just, um, so, um, the other thing is, I've heard people say, well, there's, don't worry about it, there's site plan review. As the planning board knows, a site plan review doesn't really have the opinion to say no. It's not a special permit, it's a site plan. So...
Excuse me, John?
Yes.
I think Annalee's trying to talk to you.
Okay. Can you hear me, Annalee?
We can hear you, she couldn't hear her.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, is there someone in the audience now? Um, Jen?
Can I still talk?
I think your time was up, you had the two minutes.
We have the two minutes.
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Uh, okay. My problem was that I wasn't...
Okay, audience?
Hi, Jennifer Remmellard, Conway Street. Um, I'm actually in strong support of changing this to the three areas that you've spoken about in town. Um, I know that there's plans in progress to modify the leary lot to enable access, which would encourage parking downtown, which would bring business to the community. And I know a lot of small business owners within the center of town are strong proponents of having more parking. So by enacting this new, um, frontage, um, it's my understanding that that would be a really strong suit, um, to, to incorporate that area. It also would enhance the large number of parcels within the community in these three zones that the town owns that are off the tax rules. There's nothing being done with those properties. They are for the benefit and the youth of the residents and the community. So by the planning board voting for this to be on the special town meeting warrant and agenda, um, I feel that that would be really a strong, um, benefit for the community. We would hopefully be able to utilize the potential of having, uh, different locations possibly for senior housing or other fields within the community that people are strong proponents of. It would also increase, um, you know, community usage. So even if there are strong proponents against it, um, being within the whole entire town, um, I think narrowing it down to these three areas is really a benefit to our community, and I hope that you will vote yes. Thank you.
Um, uh, online? Um, Trevor?
Hello, I'm, uh, Trevor McDaniel, a resident of Five Sherman Drive, South Deerfield. I'm speaking as a resident and taxpayer tonight. Um, I think we need to move our town forward. Um, the town, uh, changes zoning all the time. There's many articles on, on this annual town meeting. Last annual town meeting, we changed our, our zoning, and I think we need to change our zoning to keep up with the, um, the changes in our, in our community, and the changes we need to bring to our community to keep our community vibrant and, and, um, and to bring economic development, to lower the tax burden, uh, on the homeowners. There are, you know, I know there's, um, thought that this had only to do with one project. It doesn't. A majority of our project has to do with developing tax-based and economic development in our town. We've been working on this leary lot for a very long time, along with many other parcels in town to get, to get some projects going. Um, you know, zoning, I beg you to find 100-foot of frontage anywhere in the downtown area. Our lots are very small, and I, this is a personal opinion, you know, I, I think many years ago, uh, zoning put in large 100-foot, 200-foot areas. I, I understand that makes sense in a zoning area, but in a lot of the downtown, 100 feet is, um, is, is not enough. I mean, you, you just, there, there's, there's hardly any parcels in town that have 100-foot of frontage. So it was, it was designed to really keep out people who couldn't afford to come to our community. And I think it, we need to move forward and, uh, make, make housing affordable and vibrant for, uh, our senior citizens and people of low income. And I think it's important to change our zoning to do that. But this is one aspect of that, which would be, uh, changing zoning, like Lili said, to, to bring in some senior housing and use up property in town that's just sitting there, and to bring economic development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trevor.
Yeah.
In town? Uh, yes, and then, next time.
Bruce St. Peter, Snowberry Circle. This proposed change is not a grant for the, uh, select board or any other board to proceed with any kind of development of this land. This would still have to go through three processes, one being the planning board, uh, possibly the ZBA, uh, and if it makes it through that, then before any development would happen, uh, it would have to be, money would have to be appropriated, it would have to go through town meeting, and you would, uh, have a vote at that particular point in time. So it's not an outright grant that's passed today and start tomorrow. It still has to go through a lot of processes before anything can be done on this property. That's why this is forward-looking and will enhance the town in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. Peter. Um, Linda, since you've already spoken once, I will be talking to other people instead. So there's a South Deerfield resident who needs to identify themselves.
Yes, this is Judith Rathbone, um, resident of South Deerfield, 131 North Main Street. Um, I, I, I'm just really, um, amazed that, uh, the town voted to turn this down, and yet, um, under the guise of wanting to assist low-income people and seniors, that this is back, um, with specific properties identified. I, I know, I know the Brayburn Road people are, uh, unable to see how this could be designed so that it could work. Even if it could, there need to be studies done of the impact of traffic, whether it's for senior housing off, off North Main or Brayburn, um, whether it's huge numbers of people showing up, uh, on, on North Main, um, street. And I, I just, I'm, I, I know that, that frontage is developed for safety, and I just feel like everyone's throwing all that away completely, and nobody cares. Nobody cares about the safety issue. That's the impression I have. People are just, have their agendas, and they just want to push their agendas without considering, considering safety. You know the residents in our neighborhood are very concerned about the traffic patterns anyway, um, because of, of the presence of, um, heavy trucks going back and forth all the time. And to think that in addition to those long, heavy, constant trucks and, uh, employees driving, uh, to work, uh, that in addition to that, that there would be, uh, 80 cars coming in on a regular basis, it's just, it's just not the location. You know, whatever is developed as a so-called park, which is actually soccer fields, should be done downtown. There's space downtown, it should be done downtown. Thank you.
Um, yeah, Julie?
I feel like I'm coming late in this a little bit, um, because I missed town meeting. Um, I agree with what Jennifer said, she's very clear and concise, I cannot be that clear. I do know that for the last five, 10 years, we've been talking about moving all our activity into South Deerfield and protecting our land outside, our open space. Um, and this to me supports that goal that the town had discussed and voted on and worked for, with a lot of committees putting a lot of time into it. Um, and I'd like us to focus on that goal that we've had for many years, um, and this seems to support, um, that goal that we as a town voted on.
Thank you. Oh, do we have other people on Zoom?
Ms. Linda's? Oh, Carolyn?
Yes, although, well, Carolyn?
Thank you. Um, we, the select board did listen from the town, earlier town meeting. Uh, we did speak with people, and, and we heard the concerns of, of making it a town-wide, uh, municipal access. So we did revise our requests down, uh, from the original town-wide, uh, to just the Center Village District with our projects in mind. Um, while we have not had a formal vote, there is consensus on the select board that we would like to use our ARPA money to enhance, um, development downtown and develop the leary lot into parking. We're negotiating, um, land swap with, um, our, the new lumberyard owners to, um, have access onto Elm Street, so it's, you drive in off of North Main and drive out on Elm Street. Um, we hope to have that done and capitalize on the activity that would be happening at Treehouse to, um, work with our downtown businesses, including Berkshire Bureau. Um, we obviously want to, you know, we have a need for recreation, uh, fields and athletic fields in town. There's no question, our kids are bussed out, they're left in waitley to be picked up. Um, that's not safe. They could, to walk to, um, a field is really important, I, I think from a safety point of view. Um, we also, um, want the opportunity, if it occurs, to purchase property along North Main Street to access, um, Brayburn property that the town owns behind Brayburn, uh, the two town-owned lots there, uh, to develop additional athletic fields. As Lili said, we don't have, we haven't, uh, worked out the design, but whatever, we're putting our senior housing, um, down behind, uh, the town hall, and we might, at that point, need also a 50-foot access. We intend to develop the fields and, um, leary lot in the next, uh, year or two, so this is not something that is, uh, not going to happen. It's for the town benefit, and we believe that the 50-foot, um, access is safe, um, and is more appropriate for the neighborhoods downtown. Frontier Regional High School, uh, Frontier Regional High School, I just want to read these, um, notes. Frontier Regional High School, main entrance is 30 feet, the rear entrance is 23 feet. Um, the north, yes?
As a conclusion, the select board who is proposing this can have more, have a conclusion...
Oh, okay, I would just want to, yes, I just want to read the distances, the average distances of the streets. So I'm fine. It's more appropriate, that's great. Thank you.
Um, uh, yes. I, I think now, I'm sorry, I don't, your name? Yes?
Mary Moore, I live on Thayer Street in South Deerfield.
Can people hear Ms. Moore?
No.
Could you speak up just a little?
Mary Moore, I live on Thayer Street in South Deerfield. When I got the postcard the other day, I, I thought if something was voted down as recently as June, and it's coming up again this soon, it really sounds to me like somebody somewhere has a very specific ge, agenda they're trying to ram through. And is it true, somebody said earlier that the zoning, maybe the Zoning Board of Appeals or some other process is already in place? If these specific, uh, variances were to, wanted to happen, people could go through that instead of making a town-wide, changing the, um, changing the zoning frontage law town-wide or for these specific places? Is that true, that the process is already there?
Those are some of the que... We're not responding right now to questions, but that could be a question that we can try to...
All right, well, I guess the point is that somebody's got an agenda somewhere that they're trying to ram through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Um, Tim Hilchi?
Good evening, Tim Hilchi, 30, 330 Greenfield Road. Um, I just wanted to correct a misperception, um, that's been mentioned a couple of times during the meeting. Um, at annual town meeting, we were asked to vote on a, on a citywide or town-wide ordinance that would have granted, uh, a lot of authority to the planning, uh, to the select board and the town to develop town-owned properties. But that vote is entirely different than what we're discussing tonight, and also, annual town meeting and special town meeting votes require a two-thirds majority to pass something. So if we had a 62% vote in favor of, it would be defeat, anything that was trying to be moved forward. So I would, I would argue that there wasn't an overwhelming vote against what was proposed before, but there was enough concern among residents that, um, they asked the, they asked the town to come back with something that maybe was a little more specific. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Tim. Um, yes?
Hi, I'm John Foreski, um, on, I live on Facumpuck Drive. For full disclosure, I'm a member and transparency, I'm a member of the finance committee on the personnel board, but I'm speaking as a taxpayer and a resident. I have two problems with the article. One is that it's limited to municipal facilities. Is that really fair to Joe Jones that has less than 100 feet, and he has to go through various processes to get a waiver that the town does not? I, I, I don't think the town should have extra rights in getting, in not even having get a waiver. The other thing that bothers me is years ago, when the 100-foot frontage was voted in, I don't know when that was, but there must have been a reason for it. And I haven't seen anywhere where there's been discussion about whether those reasons should be ignored, for lack of a better word, or not paid any attention to when we make this, when we go down to 50 feet. Just saying, okay, we don't care what happened years ago, let's just change it. And I think, as somebody said earlier, there is a process to get a waiver. I think this, the town should go through that process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Foreski. Um, Zoom? Uh, Fran? Uh, well, we have Fran, and then after the next person, Amber.
No, Fran just had her thumb up like, she didn't have her hand raised.
Uh, Amber? We are unmuting you, Amber, or you are unmuting yourself? I don't know. Um, Amber, are you interested in speaking? Amber Dupree, there we go, thank you.
Hello?
Amber?
Well, my name isn't Amber, I don't know why my daughter's name came up, my name is Gail. So, anyway, I, I'm, I agree with the last man that was just talking. I think that the property shouldn't have been pref, ahead of time. I think you're supposed to do this stuff beforehand and then make a purchase, and it seems like town hall can't, or whoever's trying to pass the law, change the frontage. Again, we already voted on it, and it sounds like, looks like, someone didn't like the answer that they got through the vote, so let's do it again. Let's, let's get the ans, let's keep doing it until we get the right vote that we want. It just, it don't seem fair. I don't think that your average person could be doing anything like this. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Uh, Gail? Um, in person here? Yes. Yes.
Skip Homestead, Stillwater Road. I was actually going to ask several questions. So, let me go and ask the questions, understanding that you're not going to answer the question. There are, this is a piece of property over here. And if you look at it, Elm Street, Conway Street, there isn't a lot on there that has 100 feet frontage. So, I guess the question would be, what would happen? There are three houses right across the street here, none of which have 100 feet of frontage. What would happen if some, if those houses were destroyed? Could the owners rebuild? And then, and then out on Elm Street, I think most of you know the Caldwell Banker lot or the building on the guest frontage, 30 feet. I'm going to stop there. So, the question basically is, really concerns itself with pre-existing lots.
Yep. So, when you say pre-existing lots, like, so you're saying there already are a lot of them?
They were lots before zoning ever.
I'm not sure if they're for or.
Well, we're not necessarily. We're not really having back and forth.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
I'll ask those questions again once.
Guaranteed. Fran? Has Fran spoken before either? I don't.
No.
No. Fran?
No, I haven't. I would like to agree with several of the previous speakers who have acknowledged that there is a route to be taken for variances and that the town shouldn't be any different than the regular residents. Also, I would hate to see this go the same route as our voting on the elementary school so many years ago where it kept coming up and up and up, as someone said, until they got the vote that they wanted and then the motion was tabled. So, I think, as one woman said, there is an agenda in town and that somebody didn't like what's going on. And I would like to say that many of the townspeople are not too happy with the way things are going either. Thank you.
Thank you. In person? Yes.
Live at 50 Sugar Oak Street. I could tell you a lot of the history about the Leary Lot and Elm Street, but that's good for economic development, like Trevor said. At one time, we had a percentage of taxes given by businesses up to 26% to 28%. Now, we're only collecting less than 20%. My thing has always been, try to build business in town because business doesn't take that much for services, but yet they receive, they pay a lot in taxes. Just paying regular tax rates, they pay a lot of taxes. I could talk to you about the lot where they want to put senior housing and recreation. That land was donated. I was back, a selectman back then, and half of it was to be donated to the town for recreation and the other half was to be for senior housing. What we should be doing is finding a way to get out there. This article gives that way, 50 foot. The same thing up in North Main Street. I want to give you a couple of examples of what 50 feet. You all know Sugar Oak Street. That's built as a state highway. It used to be a state highway, still owned by the state, but the fact of the matter is, if you measure that road, the travel lane is 20 feet and the breakdown lane, correction, the travel lane is 12 feet and the breakdown lane is 8 feet. So, that's 20 foot for half of the road. The other half of the road, you got 40 feet. So, when somebody says some 50 feet's not enough, that's just ridiculous. 50 feet is enough to turn around and drive tractor trailers through there without a problem.
Thank you.
And guess what? I went through Arctic today and they've got 400 parking spaces back there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pachuric. Thank you.
Sugar Oak Street, 50, 60.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone online? And I do think, since we will be continuing this hearing, maybe we'll take just a couple more comments on each side and then whether or not the select board needs to conclude. And then, we will be voting to continue the hearing to September 30th, if that is in agreement with Planning Board. So, let's see. We're back to Zoom. Is there anyone other than Linda? Linda was the, had spoken once before, but then Carolyn?
I.
Pardon me? Is there someone who's speaking? I don't see.
Bob Decker.
Yes. Looking to get recognized.
Okay, Mr. Decker in there.
Somebody asked a question, when were the frontages put in? The frontages were put in back in the early 70s, possibly the late 60s. There was a developer from Springfield was going to buy a large farm in the Mill River area. And at the time, you could put six houses on an acre of land. That's when the frontages were set up for, if you had water and sewer, it was 100 feet, it was 100 and a quarter if you had one or the other. And if you had neither, it was going to be 125 feet of frontage. And the square footages were established at that time. The Planning Board amended the frontages a little bit in this, in the Residential Agricultural District to 200 feet. And they put up more square footage in that area, but still in the Center Village, it wasn't called a Center Village then, it was 100 feet and 12,000 square for a single-family house. It was 15,000 square for two families. Okay? So, just for a point of clarification.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anyone else from Town Hall? Okay. Then, with apologies to Linda, since you already did speak, we will have the hearing again on September 30th. Select Board, if you'd like to close, and then we will entertain a motion to continue.
Thank you, Annalee. I just want to make sure that people are aware the ZBA process requires hardship. I do not think the town is, qualifies for a hardship case. I also wanted just to make sure that we addressed the frontage adequately. Frontier Regional High School main entrance is 30 feet. The rear entrance, that's to the north, is 23 feet. North Main Street at Frontier, the actual street, is 35 feet wide. Keller Herd Drive is 24.5 feet wide. Captain Latham Drive is 22.5 feet. Jackson Road is 27 feet. Pelicans North Entrance is 28 feet. South Entrance is 24 feet. Pleasant Street is 26 feet. Brayburn is our, probably are one of our tightest streets. That's 19 feet. Conway's is 24 feet. Merrigan Way is 24 feet with the grass and sidewalk is 32 complete. Elm Street at Cumberland's is 30 feet and the Yankee Candle is 30. Cumberland Entrance with grass and sidewalk is 38 feet. The average of the 17 measurements is 28.79 feet. We feel that it is more appropriate than a subdivision road to, to the neighborhoods. And like I said, we are only able to get 50 feet from the lumberyard, sure our negotiations be successful for the Leary Lot. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can we, do we show the Planning Board that we're standing up? Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing on September 30th at 7:00 p.m. hybrid?
I move that we continue this meeting to September 30th. We move this meeting to September 30th at 7:00 p.m. here in the town offices. Will be a hybrid meeting on that date as well. A second.
Thank you. Thank you. In favor, Anne Mary?
Yes. Anne Mary Klinger, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes. Kathy Sylvester, yes. Andrew Elifson, yes. Kathy Trobe, yes.
And Emily Wolfco, yes. So, this meeting, the public hearing is continued to September 30th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. hybrid. Thank you all very much for your patience, especially with our technical difficulties to begin with.
Right. Annalee?
Yep. Jen?
So, I just want you to also have moved to amend to include the I District.
Yes. So, I move that we include for that meeting, the, oh, district include, I'm sorry, that the wording includes the RD C1 and the Industrial District.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. Denise Mason, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes. Kathy Sylvester, yes. Andrew Elifson, yes. Kathy Trobe, yes.
Emily Wolfco, yes. So, the language is amended. Thank you, Jen. So, now we'll move to our second public hearing of the evening, the Tourism Overlay District. Again, we'll have public comments. Select Board members who are, who did propose this bylaw will summarize at the end and then we'll have a vote on the language to go forward in the warrant. Okay.
Annalee has a soft, sweet voice. She needs a T-shirt. I will speak more. I will. Sit down, be quiet, but you're all being so good that I wouldn't have to do that anyway.
I will make note that we also have had a bit of a posting error with the, with the Tourism District also. As most of you may recall, we did vote as a Planning Board to bring the warrant with the verbiage for the Tourism District forward to Town Meeting, but we didn't realize that we needed to also vote to bring the map forward. So, that is where, in fact, we have voted to have the public hearing on September 30th, initially just to primarily address the map. The, since tonight, we are having the public hearing on the, on the Tourism District and we will be making a vote with or without a change in language for, for moving forward to the warrant. Actually, the map that we vote on, on the 30th will mirror what we discuss tonight. I'll also say as an aside, in response to a number of comments from the public, as well as different boards and committees, there has been the request which the Select Board has approved, since they are the ones who are bringing this forward, to include the Berkshire Brewing Company and the Leary Lot. Those are lots 128 and 135. So, at a, at a minimum, that is something that we will entertain when we close public comments tonight and as we move ahead thinking towards the actual map. Does that make sense?
I understand. Is there a possibility, can we put the map up just because, Jen?
Thank you. So, Jen, while I unfortunately try too quickly and not too softly read the opening for the public hearing on, on the tourism. We are opening the public hearing pursuant to General Laws 48, Chapter, Section 5 on September 30th, 13th, 2021, on a potential amendment to the Deerfield zoning bylaws, Chapter 179, adding a new section, 4950, entitled Tourism Overlay District, to encourage development of, uh, to encourage development of the entertainment venues within the said new overlay district to enhance tourism while preserving open space, forested areas, and other scenic views. The new section, 4950, is anticipated to include subsections entitled as follows. Purpose overlay district, applicability, uses, site plan review, performance standards for manufacturing, processing, assembly, or fabrication, dimensional requirements, parking and loading requirements, open space requirements, and modification requirements. Full text of the proposed articles are available in our foyer and also online. And as you know, this meeting is in hybrid. So, as you see here, here is the proposed map, which includes Berkshire Brewing and the Leary Lot, as well as the other lots that we voted to have this public hearing to.
It includes also the lot cross on, no. Right here. On Elm Street.
It's a barbecue lot. Where the barbecue is.
Part of the rationale for this overlay district is that it allows more activities without the burden on the businesses to obtain temporary permissions or licenses. The lots that have been selected have ample room for parking for large gatherings and would not be a burden on the center of town. And it is admittedly a small start, but other lots can be added after we have experience working with the proposed district. So, thank you all. I just really was very thankful how concise people were with their comments. So, keep it up. So, again, we'll go back and forth. Denise with her trusty iPhone here and, so, let's take comments from the Town Hall first and then we'll move over to Zoom. And maybe if we don't need the lot, if we could see the pictures so we can more carefully see who's speaking. Thank you. So, is there anyone in Town Hall who wishes to address the Tourism Overlay District? Lili. Lili Dwight.
Lili Dwight, South Mill River Road. I see by the map that was here, that, that new Sunny Days, the new Marijuana Campus, I guess is what it is, is included in that. And I'm just wondering, how does that affect the process of them moving through development over the next year in our town? I just don't understand if it does or doesn't. So, I don't know if there's an answer, but I'd appreciate one. Thank you.
I can use her that, Annalee.
Well, we're not having back and forth right now, Carolyn, but maybe at the end.
That's fine.
Is there someone else with a comment on Zoom?
I was going to wait, but I just want to say the Select Board was very relieved and pleased that the Channing Bee property remained on the tax roll and we wish to support and facilitate and encourage any further investment that is happening there and the overlay And the overlay district was, is appropriate for their intended activities as we discussed with them. And we're hoping to take the synergy of what's happening there and bring it down and into town for Berkshire Brew. And that was why we, Dave Wolfram, wanted to include the area by the barbecue and we added Berkshire Brew itself and the, you know, Leary Lot. And again, the Leary Lot is to relieve parking and stress in the neighborhood of Berkshire Brew and use the parking there for whatever events do happen. And we decided that although we've had no issues with anyone doing the entertainment, temporary entertainment license, it would be, we wanted to see how this would work. So that's why we started small. And just to answer Lili's question, that that's the overlay district. That's our red light district across the street. That's also the marijuana district. And this is also the tourist overlay district. So it really doesn't matter, you know, which overlay the person's developed.
Thank you, Carol. Yes, Jennifer?
Hi, John Ramilar, Conway Street. Sorry. So in looking at the content, I do have things I'd like the planning board to take under consideration when moving forward. I see that the planning board in here is established as the permitting authority. So I assume the site plan reviews, I would assume that the companies or people coming before you as applicants would also have to go through the other proper channels in regards to wetlands and other things like they normally would. It's just that it seems, you know, like you would be the special permit granting authority, not the ZBI. So in reducing the process, it's, you know, I think that might enhance more building in that district. But I also want, you know, want to make sure that those who currently are in the process of getting applications in front, when this, if and when this bylaw passes, that they're still in the process and that, you know, that it's not overturned. Because I feel like there are several of the things that have come before. Other committees are still at review and still in process for that, you know, even for example with Treehouse moving forward. So I'm curious to know if at the September 30th meeting you could answer that question to make sure that those particular matters are, you know, still being processed and that they're not grandfathered into this new system, that they still have to follow the old rules. Because I think when decisions were made by other boards, that that was something that was, you know, looked at, that they would have to come in for phase, phase three, for example, for Treehouse. Just, you know, throwing that out there because that was something that's in progress.
Thank you.
When you say grandfathered, do you mean that, what would be grandfathered?
I probably misspoke with using grandfathered. I just want to make sure that this new law would not negate the process that issued, you know, the previous permits allowed.
Thank you. South Deerfield residents?
Hi, it's Judith Rathbone, 131 North Main. I feel, I feel that, again, this came up pretty quickly and suddenly and I don't feel like I really have enough information to understand all the impact of this. It seems like, it seems like a good idea, anything to promote the downtown, to have people coming and to have them be in the appropriate spaces for them. I just got to Berkshire Brewing for the first time recently and found it charming and I'm looking forward to Treehouse. I also remember a Zoom meeting for the town where someone said that South Deerfield, or Deerfield, I should say, faced bankruptcy if Channing Bee had not been sold to Treehouse. And that really made me wonder how we could go from a position where we were potentially facing bankruptcy because we had so little tax revenue to finding the monies for, you know, what I believe is ill-fought-out hastily-chosen idea of putting soccer fields in people's backyards. It's been a revelation to know that now the senior housing on Brayburn is going to be athletic fields too. I think that considering the downtown area for public gatherings and tourism just makes total sense. I love the idea of the camping and I thought that was, that was terrific. I, I do have concerns about it being two alcohol facilities plus the marijuana facility so nearby. I do have concerns about that. But thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, you jumped it.
But before I do that, I just want to make a comment about the fact that town is not in any way, shape, or form.
Skip, can you just state your name and go closer to the mic so we can hear you at home?
Skip Olmstead. Comment was made about bankruptcy. We are nowhere near, it's not something we even considered. So get that out of your mind completely. There was a piece that, in this, we've added a couple of things tonight that weren't there, or at least that I wasn't aware of, Berkshire Brewing, which I think is good. We've got a craft fair up in Old Deerfield next week. Now, we won't pass this in any circumstance. A year from now, are they gonna have a problem running their craft fair, which they've run up there for the last 40, 30, 40 years that I'm aware of?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Trevor?
So I would like to echo Skip's comments that we are quite financially solvent. And I think our biggest concern about Treehouse was going to a nonprofit. You know, going from a tax-based property into something that was non-tax-based. But we certainly, thanks to the finance committee and others, steward our finances very well in town. So we're very good. I just wanted to mention to Skip, know that the craft fair would still go on and do their thing. People can still come and get, you know, permits for craft fairs and other entertainment things throughout the town like they normally do. This would just allow places to have some by right areas that could promote tourism and economic development throughout, throughout the town. And as a resident, really look forward to this. And I think it's a great, a great program to start and then evaluate over the next year or so and see how it needs to change, if anything. Thank you.
Thank you. In house here? No one, it appears in house. Is there anyone else online and other, if there's any other closing for the select board? And we'll see if the planning board is ready to close the hearings.
Bob Pecker, do you want to say something, Bob?
Yes, I do. As I said at the zoning hearing a week or so ago, the meeting we had with, with the planning board, the question is, I think this is not extensive enough. Basically, the properties that should be included in this district start at the Wateley Line and end at Cheapside Bridge. You have property on Route 5 and 10, I believe, just north of the Animal Hospital. I don't believe it's being included in this proposed thing. There's property that goes to Mill Village Road, it's not there. There's property on the other side that's not included. You need to include everybody, not just one particular major parcel. I agree, it's a nice major parcel and proposal is probably nice. But you need to take it all the way up Route 5. And you need to go to the center of town. You need to take it and go 500 feet out around in the center of town and make sure all that stuff is included. Because right now, you're taking and going up North Street and you're taking in the Smokehouse, the property behind it, but the other two or three pieces of property in there aren't included. And nor is the property between Conway Street and Pleasant Street. I think you've got some of the property in there, but north of Pleasant Street, you don't have it. So I need, you need to go with a broad brush and do it all if you're gonna do it. And be fair to everybody who owns property. Because right now, it's not that necessarily, it sparks a spot zoning.
That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else in town hall? Mr. Hultze?
Yes, Tim Hultze, 330 Greenfield Road. I think that the approach of starting small and working to a larger area gives the chance for the town to see whether this is a good idea or not. It's a lot harder to take away rights once you've granted them than it is to grant some rights and then look to see if it's wise to expand. And the other thing that I would like to say is it sounds like this is in response to some businesses, by the nature of their business, would find it difficult to continually come back for special permits for one-day events. Some events, like the craft fair, which only happens once a year, don't really need this blanket ability. So it sounds like a wise and appropriate approach to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Free for all, is there anyone, anyone either in town hall or on Zoom who would like to comment? Then I don't know if the select board, which has proposed this, has any closing comment? Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, the, you know, as a select board, we carefully considered a lot of the different avenues. And, you know, one of our primary focuses was to develop the center of South Deerfield into a lot more friendly environment. And by creating these overlay districts and enhancing, you know, some of the things on 5 and 10, we felt that we could really start improving this, you know, the center of our town. Because right now, it's not very attractive and it's not appealing. But with everything that we got going in the works, we're hoping to change that in the near future. And that's why we came up with this overlay. And we, you know, strongly support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Planning board, do you feel that we've had enough opportunity to comment? So Andrew, Kathy, you're
Making a motion to propose the public comment.
May I have a second to the motion to close the public hearing?
A second.
Second by Denise. And all those in favor, Anne Mary?
Anne Marie Cludier, aye.
Denise Mason, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes. Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrew Eluston, yes.
Kathy Metrowe, yes.
Emily Wolfcoy, yes. So the public hearing is closed. And now we will have our planning board deliberations. Our deliberations will be on the wording, on the actual map as well as the wording. We could vote to have the bylaw be less restrictive, which in fact would mean including these two additional lots, 128 and 135. We can also vote to have stronger restrictions or have it unchanged.
Which are 128 and 135?
128 and 135 are Leary and Berkshire Brewing. I'm not sure which is which. So, planning board comments?
Sure. I'll comment. I think it's a really good start and I agree. I think it's better to start small and, you know, as we continue, we can, we can expand it. I think, I think, I think Tim made the comment that it's, it's hard to retract. It's much easier to expand. And I do agree, I think it is fair to have Berkshire Brew there, you know, along with the Leary Lot. I think that makes total sense.
Thank you, Denise. Other comments on the, on the planning board?
Well, I will say that I've always been, heard the conversation, the comments of Mr. Decker that spot zoning is very uncomfortable. You do look like you're, you know, granting a certain, when you don't see something kind of move through, you wonder why here, why not there. I think that the, the select board has thought this through. We, we heard a good kind of talk-through of it. We put, we put a lot of questions to the select board when they offered this plan to us at our last meeting. I felt satisfied that they had, in fact, thought through. And again, as David said, to make it a more friendly downtown in this particular way and this first step, I'm going to kind of move past, I think, my general discomfort with spot zoning, which, which I think is complicated. But I think that we want to keep that very prominent in our thoughts as we move on because there are other, there are other properties that they will have value if they are in fact recorded, if they're included in this, this zoning overlay.
Thank you. Kathy?
I agree. Spot zoning tends to favor one entity over another, right?
Kathy, can you talk more into my
Sit here, I gotta move anyway. All right. Can you hear me? So, so my thoughts, yes, spot zoning is certainly challenging and I think that spot zoning tends to favor one entity over another. If you look at the map, what might be classified or identified as spot zoning, in my opinion, because it's sort of away from the overlay, the larger portion of what's being outlined, is the Leary Lot in Berkshire. And Berkshire has been there for quite a while. And the Leary Lot is some access for their parking and it's also central to the South Deerfield proper center, if you will, which everybody benefits from. So I, I think that including that is an important part of building the center for the businesses that are right in the center of our community. We have to draw this in. I think it's great that we have this, this sort of outskirts tourism overlay and I think it's really important and we have a lot of attractions to that area, but we also have to think about the center of town. And I think the addition of these areas, Leary Lot and Berkshire and this section is sort of critical to that. And I think it benefits the community as opposed to one entity over another.
Thank you, Kathy. Other comments?
I see it as a chance to include, you know, this whole area of potential financial growth,
Could you just state your name for the record? Sorry, can't view.
Anne Marie Cludier. And I feel like that's something that we could potentially tap into. We have, obviously, as people have mentioned, you know, this craft fair that happens once a year. I think that there are a lot of opportunities for different types of festivals to happen, you know, within the center of town, thanks to these two lots. And the spot zoning that might be sort of seen happening is actually sort of encouraging equality between the two breweries, right? Is that
Also Yankee Candle is included and there's a brewery.
Right. And I think that there's a big market for festivals. I think that there, once we all open up again.
Other, other comments? I don't know who you are.
This is Dave Wolfram.
Oh, okay.
I just want to respond. We're trying to create equity between all three of the breweries in town. Not just the two.
Thank you. Thank you. Good, good point. All right, so if there are no other comments, I will say that I also support this as a good start and hopefully a stronger and hopefully a stronger direction of including more places and having more opportunities. I also like the idea that this will perhaps reduce some of the special permit burden on some of the businesses, so that they don't have to keep coming back to us as well as a burden to them. So, perhaps, I wasn't hearing that there were other potential changes to the verbiage other than including lots 128 and 135. Is that correct? So I would entertain a motion initially to change the bylaw article to include lots 128 and 135, which also been prepared in the map that either approves or address.
I move that we include lots 135 and one, is the other number?
128.
128 in the, in the map that will accompany the overlay amendment.
Thank you. That was Rachel. Can I have a second? So, all those in favor, Anne Marie?
Anne Marie Flutier, aye.
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Andrea Ritz, aye.
And Emily Wolfco, aye. So the new wording has been accepted. Now, if we could have a motion to send this to the town warrant with this additional wording.
So I'll make a motion that we send a tourism overlay district with new wording to the town warrant.
Thank you.
In the map.
Right.
Second?
Second by Andrea. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Sorry, I was forgetting about discussion. We're having a lot of discussion tonight, anyway. Anne Marie? All those in favor, or against?
Anne Marie Flutier, aye.
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Andrea Ritz, aye.
Kathy McTrevor, aye.
And Emily Wolfco, aye. So we will move this forward to the town meeting warrant. Right, correct. So our last public hearing is on our solar energy system. Oh, and I get to read the statement again. Here we go. We are having our public hearing pursuant to GL Chapter 40A, Section 5, on essential amendment to the Deerfield zoning bylaws by replacing Chapter 179, Section 4800, solar energy in its entirety, entitling the section "Solar Energy Systems", the purpose of which is to facilitate expansion of solar energy systems. This section is anticipated to include purpose definitions, general requirements, site plan review, conditions, special permit, dimensional requirements, tables of dimensional requirements for medium and large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems, table of dimensional requirements for small-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems, table of dimensional requirements for roof-mounted solar energy systems, design and performance standards, safety and environmental standards, monitoring, maintenance, and reporting, abandonment or decommissioning, and amendments to the Section 2230 use regulation notes. Both texts of these articles, again, are in the foyer and also on the town website. As many people remember, these bylaws that were passed in June were primarily for medium and large-scale solar. And there was a strong requirement that small-scale solar bylaws be addressed ASAP. And that's what the, the planning board has done. The main changes in these solar bylaws are primarily clarifications, definitions, and some correlations with other parts of the zoning bylaws. I will make note that there have been numerous additions of this solar bylaw. The one that is on the website now is, in fact, the most recent addition. And so if you're working from another warrant or another addition, I'll tell you if, in fact, the newer addition addresses the concerns that you have. So, again, we've got comments going back and forth between town and Zoom.
Do you understand the change in the small scale?
The changes in the small scale especially do have to do with, well, the changes in the bylaw, as I said, clarifications. So, for example, we really wanted to clarify where there were, where the bylaws apply just to medium and large scale, rather than to all of the solar installations, where they apply just to ground-mounted or ground-mounted and roof-mounted. The definition, we also did include some dimensional use tables that we felt were more, were easier for the public to understand as they were considering solar installations. The definitions in particular, there has been, there's been, we are defining the maximum size for small-scale solar installations. And then also in terms of correlation with other parts of our zoning bylaws, that's where we have put in these new use regulation tables and the dimensional use tables that will then take precedence over the tables that are there now. And we made some footnote clarifications and definition clarification. So, do we have on, in town, is there a, in Town Hall, is there, are there any comments on solar? Mr. St. Peters?
Well, since you're only going to allow me two minutes, I'll do it the other way around. Unfortunately, I ran out of coffee, so I only got four copies, so. Every other one here?
Thank you.
And hopefully moving time to read them over. There is one mention. Bruce St. Peters, 19 Snowberry Circle. There is one mention that is not on there, just a typo, Section 3893. Select board has written as two words. I believe your submittal to the town is one word, as well as that was approved at the town meeting. But that's just a typo. The rest of it, I hope, is pretty much self-explanatory. And if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer. And I know you're not doing answers, but it's a future point, or whether you would like to contact me. There is one other thing, there's another one about Section 3842, Section B1. I'm not sure whether that wording should be from or of. It seems it'll be more important to make sure other properties and structures were not shaded, rather than what is shading the applicant's solar system. 3837, delete utility scale, replace with medium and large scale. Utility scale has been eliminated totally out of the bylaw, the revised bylaw. And you may want to do that. I'm just kind of going over some of the very little thing. 3832 up towards the top. I'd suggest possibly including wording for expiration or abandonment on solar systems, on even small systems, because you are including small systems that would apply to commercial establishments. So, in two years, it's more than ample time to, I suggest it is, insert would be a permit issued pursuant to this bylaw shall expire if the solar energy system is not installed and functioning within 24 months from the date the permit is issued. It's a small system, the building inspector, the permit holders shouldn't have to hold on to a permit forever.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Bruce, the things that you're talking about, abandonment, changing the utility scale, can you just...
Okay, I'm sorry, what was that?
Set back, you guys, set back.
I'm trying to go fast so you don't shut me off.
You're already stopped.
Well, I want to know what your main points are, because we've been looking at this for a long time. What are your main things? What are your main, what are your main concerns?
Dimensional requirements, heights as well. And if anybody has ever looked at the house up on Solar Avenue in Montague, that would be a great reference point as to somehow changing that from the height to something relative to the roof line, so it doesn't stick up like a sore thumb. Another one is the front and sides eliminating systems in front yard. A good example would be the one down in Mitchkowsi Circle in Wheatley, standing right up in the corner, that you drive right in, and there you are. You know, it's, it's only very few, but that's what rules are written for, is a minority to protect the majority. So hopefully you'll take the time to review it, and before I get...
Thank you. Thank you. South Deerfield resident?
Yes, thank you. Judith Rathbone, 131 North Main, again. I think my public hearing comment is more about process at this point. I really don't get what's going on. I don't understand why it's designated. And by the way, I'm not looking for an answer, because I understand from what the rules were that no answers were supposed to be given, and no responses were supposed to be made to comments. It's stifling to have that happen. But I don't understand this back and forth between the town and the public. I don't understand if it's because you guys think that there's not enough public commentary from people. I don't understand if it's because everybody who represents the town and is elected or hired by the town also considers themselves a resident and so can dominate the airwaves by participating sort of twice. So my question is really about process. I don't understand why people were allowed to speak multiple times. Some were and others weren't. And I don't understand why some people were given more airtime and others weren't. So to come, my questions, my comments are really about that process. And let me come back to the solar panels. Again, where is the time to truly consider this? It feels like everything was done totally last minute, these constant changes. Obviously, people make mistakes and do foolish things. And I don't have any sense of definitiveness about this. That concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Abelard, Conway Street. So I just want to say that if you're curious to know what's going on in the community, attend planning board meetings, look online, educate yourself by asking questions on a regular basis. While this is new to me, I've been following you since the previous town meeting. And I strongly support this clarification with the small solar, because I think it's really a necessary thing. I'd also like to support Mr. St. Peter's concerns with the height of the solar panels. I think, you know, maintaining our quaintness, if you want to refer to it as that, or style within the community is really important. I think people are really curious to make sure, you know, other surrounding communities that what we don't like in regards to solar really is implemented here. And I think I'm really great at posting things online, and I really appreciate that, because when I have questions about what's going on, I can read there. And I, you know, I really strongly support that. And I think Mr. St. Peter brought up a lot of great points with his, with his talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments at all then, between Zoom and in house? No, all right, then, planning board?
We do have one. David Keith has his hand raised.
Okay. Whoever that is.
Hello, can you hear me? You hear my dog in the background now? Yes, all right. This is David Gilbert Keith. I'm on the Energy Committee. And I applaud, I'm a little surprised about the question about process. Maybe it's not process, but I know that you have been very deliberate about this and deliberative. And I appreciate that. I wanted to say so. If, if there's amending happening still, I would be in favor of the larger, smaller, small arrays, because some businesses could draw more power. But I would think that 660 is fine, but 1700 might be more appropriate for longer term. And otherwise, I just applaud all the work you have put in on this. And would like to emphasize that part of the rush is that there is a gold rush happening in solar power. And, and a lot of people are, a lot of big businesses are trying to get their foot in the door. And it would be, it behooves the town to have things in place ahead of those requests from big corporations and so on. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
I want to make a clarification.
Denise?
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification, just so no one's confused. The 660 is for ground-mounted for residential, okay? You can still put roof-mounted, so you can do a combination. And if we're, if it were to exceed 660, you couldn't do it on the roof. You'd have to come for a site plan review. That wasn't loud enough? Okay. Do you want me to repeat that? Okay.
Yes, I would like to repeat that, please.
Okay. No, just the clarification. The 660 is for ground-mounted for residential. You can still put roof-mounted. If you want more than that, then you would just have to have a site plan review. But you can have that. So just want, just want to make sure that you realize that. Okay. Was that loud enough?
Um, it appears that there's another comment on Zoom, 413351, et cetera? Or is that not?
Just someone using the phone.
No, that's our phone.
Okay. So, planning board, can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes. Yes. I make a motion to close the public hearing on solar. Denise?
I second it, Kathy.
Kathy Sylvester, any further discussion?
I have one question. Yes. I got one more thing. One of the things that Bruce brings up before we close is canopy. And that is, we have that as allowed, and I think it should come under site plan review.
Why is that?
I think it's large. I think it's going to end up being, what we're trying to do is create an opportunity for people to do it, I don't know. I want to just, I'm looking for a little more clarification on, on your concern about the canopy, like a canopy park.
Fine. Sure, certainly.
I just, I need, I need clarification there.
Well, I'm just concerned that these canopies may be starting up, the way the bylaw is written right now, an individual could put a canopy, solar canopy, over his driveway in the front yard and in lieu of a auto shed or whatever. And I, I mean, I just don't think they're conducive to the interior residential district in town. You keep hearing, well, we want to keep the quaintness of the town and everything else. Well, I don't think solar arrays on poles or any other structure in front yards and in driveways is going to be conducive to keeping that character. And that's why my suggestion was that they be not allowed in RA and CVRD. And possibly, if you wanted C1, because... And possibly if you wanted, uh, C1 because there's a lot of C1 areas that are abut the CBR.
Thank you.
Do we have any bylaws about carports?
About carports?
Carports?
Right. But the carport seems to me to be a very.
Perfect place to put it.
I know.
Right.
Right.
And we, what do we care what it's made of? Right?
This might be part of our deliberations too though.
The solar canopy, like, it's like a car park that's a solar installation. So it's not separate from somebody's. Is it separate from somebody's? Do they put up a solar canopy and then also?
Well, do we have any rules about what? Excuse me, just a moment. This would be part of our, um, our deliberations about the, uh, the actual bylaw. Right now we're just, um, considering whether or not to close the public hearing. Oh, I see.
Yep, yep.
And then if we could speak one at a time and, um, be recognized through the chair. Thank you. So, um.
I already made a motion to close the public hearing.
And we just want to vote on that. And she did.
Okay.
So.
So, uh, Ann Mary?
That would make good to your, yeah.
I'm done.
Denise Mason, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Annalee Wolfco, yes.
So the public hearing is closed. Um, so now, um, we will, um, discuss, I suppose, um, how we, how we should start is with the, well, we have to have a motion and then we have discussion. Right. So, um, a motion to, um, well, someone make a motion. It sounds like it's either to have the bylaws as they are right now, then there are some questions about canopies, there's questions about size, I believe. Those seem to be the primary questions, if I'm correct.
So, so Annalee, if, if there's, um, if there is an issue with the canopy, can we put that we, we would not allow any canopy in the residential, but it could be put on an existing, on a carport?
But if it were a new, new, um, construction, it could be, you know, someone builds a new carport with solar.
Can you speak, speak less?
Um, I don't know why you'd, it would have to be a new, uh, only existing structure. I think if you can build a new carport with, uh, solar on top, it would solve two issues.
And what you're talking about Denise also is sort of folded with two issues. One is the residential zoning and one is small scale. Cause small scale could also be business, not just residential.
Right, true.
Yes.
Kathy?
So my concern is that, uh, you know, are we cherry picking what you can put in your front yard? Because do we have any rules that you can't put a big, huge shed in your front yard as long as it meets the setback? You know, I don't want to get into saying you can have this, but you can't have that because I may not want someone to build a huge shed in their front yard because it blocks my view of whatever. But I'm not sure I have the right to say that. And so are we doing that with solar canopies or solar arrays in the front yard? I mean, I get it, you know, might not like looking at it, but there's a lot of things I might not like looking at and I'm not sure we can prevent that. You know, that's somebody's yard.
Kathy?
I believe the term quaint, right? Like the earth is burning, drowning, drying up, you know? I mean, and so there are people who are really trying to do their best to, if everybody does something, you know, collectively we all may change, right? And I think we have to be careful about what one person determines as quaint and one determines as an eyesore, right? And how we look at, like Kathy says, you know, if it might be something that's beautiful to the one person and maybe not so beautiful to the neighbor. And also what is the size of the property? Where is it, you know, how far is it away? How close are you butting your neighbor's edge?
One problem that I've had.
You have, um, Ann Mary?
Sorry. One problem that I've had wrapping my mind around is you could build a much bigger fence than we've allowed for, you know, to build a solar array. And, you know, your neighbor can build whatever kind of fence they need to, and so it's a much smaller, potentially bothersome thing that your neighbor is doing. And so I guess I'm having a hard time wrapping your, my head around, you can build whatever kind of fence and paint it whatever color you want, but if it's a solar array, then it's something different.
Um, so Kathy? Yes?
So the canopy, is, what's the height?
Uh, what we have in ours right now, I believe, is, um, thirty-nine sheets. And canopies are defined in the solar world as different from ground mounted systems. Um, and in general they are off, I mean, very often seen as pergolas or car parking areas. Want to, um, mow on that? And there was the question of six sixty versus seventeen hundred as a maximum, um, size. I'll make note that the six sixty, it's a little confusing from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Six sixty on one hand is the, uh, Department of Public Utilities net metering maximum for residential allowance, which is ten kilowatt hours, translates to six sixty. Um, but then also, um, and it's, and six sixty is, is less than half the size of a tennis court. So just for putting your arms around that. Seventeen hundred, which is another number that's been put forward, is derived from the, also Massachusetts definition for small or residential solar installations under their smart incentive program, which is the incentive for people to put in, um, in solar. And seventeen hundred square feet is approximately forty-two by forty-two. So you can think of how that fits into a football field or it's more than half of a tennis court. A tennis court being, uh.
Thirty-six by seventy-eight.
Yeah. There you go.
Pretty good.
So forty-two by forty-two versus, yeah. So six sixty versus seventeen hundred. Andrea?
Isn't the six sixty just the ground mounted part?
Correct, for small scale.
If people wanted to make larger installations, they could by using their roofs.
If their roofs are applicable for the solar. And as Denise mentioned earlier, if they want it larger, their roof doesn't work, they can, then they do bump into the medium and they have site plan review.
Right.
Correct.
For ground mounted.
For ground mounted, anybody's business or residential. Yes, Denise?
You know, I mean, as I look at this six sixty, I mean, we've discussed this numerous times. And, you know, if you're in town, I get it. I mean, six sixty is probably, I don't know whether I would want more than that. If you're, if you're out, way out in the country someplace in Deerfield where you don't have any neighbors, I can understand how people would want more. And that's fine. They just have to come for a site plan review. So, you know, you've got to think about the entire town, not just one, you know, one element.
Thank you. Yes, Kathy?
Well, I, I still think we went afar away from ten thousand to twenty-one hundred to six sixty. Personally, I mean, in a, in town, you still have setback requirements. And again, are you limited to what you can put within those setbacks on anything else on your property? I don't, you know, I don't, I'm asking the question because if you're not, then why this? You know, I have a roof mounted system and it doesn't cover all of our needs. And it probably is, it's almost ten, so what? And with electric cars coming and electric heat because we got to get off fossil fuels, some people can't put it on their roof. I have friends that can't do it, that they don't have, they have some shade. Um, but they have a field where they could put a larger system. So, you know, I personally think that it's, it should be larger. I, I agree with David Keith actually. I think we should have stayed with our twenty-one hundred or seventeen hundred and not gone down to six sixty. I think that was way too restrictive and we shouldn't be restricting people's yard with one thing and not another.
Thank you. Yes, Ann Mary?
I just want to reiterate that it's really watered down from ten thousand feet to six sixty, you know, that's the intention of it. And I think that we're weighing people's, you know, eye, sightline, you know, with scientific facts, what's going on in our world right now and what are we going to prioritize.
Okay, uh, yes, Rachel?
So I don't disagree with the impact of fossil fuels and the importance of us to move forward with this. And that is part of the reason we're pushing on this. I al, I do feel however, um, so if somebody is going to put the thirty thousand dollars into this, the extra three hundred and, three hundred and fifty dollars to come before us for a site plan review is not so onerous that it isn't, and it will preserve those neighbors, uh, the neighborly feeling, the understanding, like, that I'm not just blocking it somewhere, a larger array, uh, where it is really complicating somebody else's view, whatever, changing the neighborhood because of the size. So I, I guess I'm, I'm in favor of the more modest size. I think, and I'm, I will just say too, that my experience sitting here is that people are not used to looking at this. And I agree with you, it is going to get easier for us. We are going to look at them down the road and say, oh, there's a nice little, cute little quaint little solar array. But until we see those solar arrays that way, I think that's really hard on your neighbors to see it as, as, so I, I'm, I'm for the six sixty. Um, I think it gives us a little bit, um, of play, not discourage more building of it, but, um, it is, it's an expensive endeavor. No one's going to throw those up.
Yeah, true.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because, you know, obviously you've been on the planning board a long time and I haven't. So, so if I wanted to build anything in my yard, would I have to come for a site plan review or would it only be for the solar array?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you wanted to build a shed, that's, that's covered. You'd have to have the building inspector come.
Yeah. I think you do for your solar panels, do you not?
Um.
You have to have a building permit.
Bob, are you there?
You do have to have a building permit.
Permit, but not.
Right.
Permit, but are different from south site plan review.
You want to make sure that, that the building has enough structural integrity to hold the panels. If the roof, it's not going to do that.
They do that. They do do that because I've been through it. Um.
Yeah, all the solar panels and solar installations are permitted. To comment on limiting in the yard, I mean, there's a lot coverage, but that's about it for limiting what people can do on their yard is exceeding the allowable lot coverage. There's no specific thing that's limited. Does that help?
So permit, so.
It does. And that's current, that's current. So we're actually changing that, Bob.
You'll still need a building permit.
And electrical permit.
And electrical permit. You're not changing that at all. You can't change building code.
No, but we're actually changing the limitations at the lot permit. I mean, we're, we're, now we're saying it's six sixty or, or you have to go to the.
Yeah, but to address the other person's comment about whether we're limiting any other structures on the property, no, it's only lot coverage limiting structure. So if you want to build a garage or a barn, you can.
And not a carport?
You can build a carport. Yes, you can build a carport. I'd let you build a canopy too unless this restricts it.
And just want to clarify that what it says in, in here is that, um, on the purposes of this bylaw, solar can, canopies are considered ground mounted solar energy systems.
No, Jennifer, that was an earlier version. That is not part of the updated version. That version. That's because, um, in fact, uh, for solar, canopies are not considered ground mounted. They have their own definition. All right.
I mean, it's a structure, a, a canopy is a structure. You could put a canopy on, park your car on there with no solar panels on it. It's still a structure.
Right. And on the one hand, it looks like a solar panel. On the other hand, it's like roof mounted solar.
Exactly.
So I'm, I'm.
Interesting, interesting, yeah. Yes, yes.
We can't hear you. You need to go to the mic and state your name, please.
Mentioned it, uh, yeah, it's approximately twenty-five.
Super garage.
Is to, is as.
Well, one car garage.
Right, right. Okay. All right, um, well, it seems like these seem to be the two issues. Is that correct as we're talking here? Size and canopies.
I'm not, I'm not as concerned about canopies. Sorry, I asked my question. I'm taking that off the, um, actually I'm more concerned about decommissioning, but I think we're going to hold on to that because I think that that's one down the road. I think we need to look at that more. I think that's a very good point. Um, I think that somebody has a decommissioned solar panel and maybe that's something we want to look at, but I, I'd have to think about that more and I think that's, that's some.
Kathy?
Well, we talked a lot about, you know, I can build this, but I can't install it. But I think it comes back to decommissioning of those solar panels, right? And, and having an understanding who has them and the timeframe of them, when were they installed and what is the light of them? And then how do we discuss with them? There's going to be an exit with these solar panels because they're all coming in at a relatively significant timeframe, right? And so the decommissioning, I think, is really going to be another big issue.
Right. Which we're thinking is, yeah, potentially. So let's take these two issues separately. There's the canopy and there's the size. And let's maybe begin with canopy first. And I'm not quite sure, um, what the, um, what the motion would be if there's someone who wants to make a motion about changing or not changing the canopy definition. Yes, Ann Mary?
So this is the suggestion that Bruce, this is the suggestion that Bruce St. Peter made. And I think if everybody looked at it, I'm not sure what it indicates, but I think it indicates that right now it, there's a yes. But Bruce feels that there should be a no, just so we all know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because we have, we've been, we've put this one out there and back and forth enough time. Um, and he also brings up the height. Yep. And Jennifer's, um, echoed the same. He, um, you know, uh, one is an RA. So there you go. There's neighbors, whether they live really close by or really far away, or panels are way far away or they're close by. I think that's tricky. And then in CRVD, CBRD, sorry.
The, um.
Yeah, thank you. Four feet. Um, and again, I think, so I think it's a good, this is a roof mounted, so.
Sorry, Andrew?
Sorry.
Or Kathy?
Yes, it is. It is. So it's thirty-five feet or from the ground to the roof. So we're not talking thirty-five feet more ground mounted.
No, no, no.
Yes, so, so I'm not sure if I have a concept of how tall it's.
Thirty-five feet is approximately two, well, it's a two, three, well, a story is about fourteen feet. So it's two and a half stories.
Yeah.
Okay. For thirty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven is two feet more, right.
And may I ask, how did we come to these numbers?
Um, these were numbers that, um, we've seen both in other bylaws as well as in, um, what, uh, solar companies are, are installing. So kind of industry standard. So with, it's a little bit more to this than just canopies. One way to second, this is, this is just the roof mounted. So this is different. This is different, right. So back to the canopy piece of, um, does someone want to present a motion that has to do potentially with the by right or, or not by right for RA and CBRD districts? for RA and CVRD districts for solar canopies? And what else would be the questions that, I mean, that's a little different from what we've been discussing.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with it, I'm okay.
I'm, I make a motion that, um, solar canopies are a by right use in the RA and CVRD.
But they are. But they are. They are.
We're not changing it, you can read.
So, you're making a, a motion not to change the canopy? Could I have a second on that? Not changing things, so there's nothing to-
My bad.
Unless there's, there's no more discussion that, that we want. But I'm seeing shaking, no, shaking heads, okay. So, are we settled with our discussion about canopies? Um, so then, um, with the definition of six sixty versus seventeen hundred, both of which seem to have some level of industry standard to them, could I have a motion, um, about the maximum definition for small-scale solar?
Ground-mounted.
Ground-mounted. No, yeah, correct, ground-mounted, small-scale solar, right. It's either to keep it unchanged at six sixty or to, um, increase it to seventeen hundred, I think.
I'd like to move to increase it to seventeen hundred.
I second it.
Is there further discuss-
Should we talk first about this, yes?
And that's less restricted.
Yes, and it's, and, and town council has said that it's less restricted, so it-
Who seconded it?
Uh, Andrea?
Kathy, still there?
No.
Kathy, yeah, I did.
Um, yes, and town council has said that it, that if we were to increase it, it is-
Less restricted, yeah.
Can you say that one more time? So, Anne Mary made the motion?
Um, Kathy, for the first second, is it?
Kathy, okay. Okay.
Um, is, is there more discussion? So, the motion is to increase it to seventeen, is that correct?
She made the motion.
Yes, all right. Um, so, if there's no more discussion, um, Anne Mary?
Anne Mary, clear your eye.
Denise?
Denise Mason, no.
Rachel Blaine, no.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Andrea Lee, some no.
All right, so what was that? How many did we have? Was somebody counting?
Four-three.
Four-three for what?
Four-three for no.
To not increase it to seventeen hundred.
Right.
Okay. So, then-
No. I couldn't hear it either.
It was not in-
She muted the music, it was distracting.
It was-
Voted what?
Voted four-three to not increase it to seventeen hundred. To leave it at six sixty, yes. Um, so, um, then, um, can I have a motion to bring the solar bylaws as, um, stated in the September second, twenty-twenty-one version that is posted on the website forward to the warrant?
I make a motion to bring the solar bylaw as stated in the, what was that, to the warrant.
September second.
September second to the warrant.
Uh, any more discussion?
You seconded that?
Anne, thank you.
Andrea, that's not Andrea, that's not Kathy, that's Andrea. Uh, Anne Mary?
Anne Mary, clear your no.
Uh, Denise?
Yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, no.
Andrea Lee, some yes.
Okay, I gotta ask a question, sorry. So, we're bringing it to the, yeah, six sixty by right, that's our maximum allowable ground mounted. And then permit for beyond that?
Correct. And Emily Wolf, cool, yes. So, we will bring it forward to the warrant. All right, we have, I believe, um, one more item of business. Unfortunately, we are a little bit over.
No, no, you, I'm sorry about, but the, the people behind you have business here.
All right, and this is, um, this is, um, losing.
Still want to listen?
Uh-
Really smart people.
Democratic-
An A and R, um, which is now under, uh, other, we don't have any other new business, um, business not reasonably anticipated forty hours prior. Um, there is an A and R. Um, could you introduce yourselves and describe the project?
Uh, Josh Lemay, South Mill River Road.
Catherine Lemay, South Mill River Road.
Uh, the project is a subdivision of eighteen Stockbridge Road. So, for purposes yet defined. Primarily to maintain and agriculture at this point, but it's, uh, I'm the applicant on behalf of the landowners who are family members of mine.
Ah, that's what, that's the name, so they're, you're a family member, got it, got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
Welcome to Deerfield. Um, do we have any, so with an A and R, we can endorse the, um, A and R or choose not to. Um, as the planning board saw, um, we did request comments from other boards and officials and, um, other than, um, one comment from our, um, building, what is his title now?
Commissioner.
Isn't that, that's Bob, Building Commissioner. Commissioner, Building Commissioner. Um, my understanding also is that the comments that were raised by the Building Commissioner, um, are either have been taken care of or are in the process of being taken care of, that's correct?
Correct, I believe it's been approved, the alterations.
Okay, thank you. Oh, well, good, well, we got them out, thank you.
So, the comments were that the perk test should be, yeah, separated, that you should do one each, no?
It was, so the, the septic for eighteen Stockbridge Road, because of access issues, needs to be on the subdivision. So, there needed to be a designated easement for maintenance and repair of the septic, which was surveyed out. That was the alteration we made, that wasn't originally on the plan. So, you can see, like, surrounding that septic, it's, those are the new survey lines.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I also did talk with Bob Walden, who also talked with the applicants as well as the Building Commissioner and, um, feels that they're- Oh, Bob, actually-
Yeah, well, you're, you're mixing, it's the Board of Health, um, not that had the comment. And I talked, yeah, and they have settled the issue by creating the easement. So, in my opinion, as the Building Commissioner, it's a buildable lot, as zoning officer, and it's fine with the, um, Board of Health, who will put it in writing if you need it, but, but it's all set.
I think that might be nice, Bob, just to kind of clarify on this one, just because you did take the extra step.
Yeah, it was, it may already be in writing, but I was the only one there today and I couldn't locate it. And I talked to Richard and he will either rewrite another letter or locate the letter. It has been settled though and it, and, uh, and that's the, that's the way it went, yeah.
Thanks for sticking it out tonight.
Oh, no problem.
Fun, fun and games. Um, all right, um, also, one of the thing, one of the, uh, statements in the A and R application does mention that if we do endorse the, um, application, it is not a determination that the lots are buildable lots. So, I believe our motion would be to, perhaps potentially someone could make a motion to endorse the A and R application with recognition that this endorsement is not a determination that the lots designated are buildable lots. Yes, Lena?
Hi, I, I have a question, I live on South Mill River Road, so I, I know the property. It's, it's a question about where does the driveway be? Because I'm not sure how far down that road that town may be.
Yeah, there's an existing farm road that's, that accesses the, uh, field up there.
To the north, going north?
Yeah, so it goes, it goes north from, it's not on survey on this, but it's been, the road that's been in use for the history of the farm.
So, it is meeting all the way to the, um, porch room?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's a site plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I move that we endorse this plan with the understanding that it is not a determination, um, that the lots are necessarily buildable.
Thank you, um, that was by Rachel, can I have a second?
Andrea, second.
Andrea, seconded. Uh, any further discussion? So, Anne Mary, clear your-
Anne Mary, clear your aye.
Denise Mason, aye.
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Andrea Lee, some aye.
Emily Wolf, cool, aye, so, thank you for staying and-
Do you have anything to sign?
Uh, yes, and actually, um, well, as we leave- Uh, Jen, is the, the, plans out there that we can sign?
Bob, I'm just asking before he disappears, are you still there? Bob?
I think he disappeared.
We'll come back in and sign him.
And we can do a document sign.
I'll look and see if it's in the office on the desk.
Town Hall will let us know when the documents are here to sign. We can't do the document sign on an A and R.
But these go to the-
It says the Mylar that we have to sign. So, um, any other public, next on our agenda is, um, any public comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come back again. I just want to say thank you for being so accommodating, everybody. That's my public comment, I appreciate it. Um, you've been wonderful to work with.
We're gonna get out of here by nine, didn't you? Thank you.
Any other, any other public comments? Thank you, Carol. Um, and I don't know, I don't know that there've been any committees or reports in seminars or whatnot.
We have another swing at that on the thirtieth.
We do, we do.
May I report on one little thing?
Yes.
I have been, uh, I have submitted an app, I've submitted an app, uh, our show, show of interest in, uh, becoming a member of the Open Space Committee to, uh, Dan Graves. I am waiting to hear from you.
Thank you.
I move that we adjourn.
And our next meeting will be hybrid, remote, hybrid on September thirtieth, seven P M.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.